Okay, everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being here. Many of you have been a part of our Zoom meetings the last few months, but I think this is our fourth go around. And for those of you who haven't before, welcome. We are just going to, I'm gonna say a few words and then have Officer Aaron Brown, our Neighborhood Response Team Officer, speak, and Dr. NJ Akbar, our school board member and liaison. And then we're gonna have some discussion with our friend, Mokai Okolo. So, and then some community discussion. For now, I've muted folks just so that we can go ahead and have things run smoothly. But as we're going through things, if you have a question, please just raise your hand here or just mention that you have a question in the chat and we'll go ahead and make sure that we address that. You know, what, you know, any speaker who's speaking, you can, you can direct the question to them or you can just let us know you have a question and go ahead and unmute you. So anyways, just to start, we are, you know, we were entering the summer and we're emerging from COVID, but we've seen obviously some tumultuous times the last few weeks in our country and in our city. The protests that we have seen are, are kind of a, I think, a kind of a fundamental moment for our country, right? We're grappling with these deaths that we've seen of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery and others. And we are struggling to kind of figure out as a nation and as a local community where to go from here. And this is something that all of our, all of our civic institutions are a part of, right? Because we're talking about policing because policing is, you know, we see the issue of systemic racism in a way that's visible or sort of very, it presents itself in volatile lethal situations. But every institution that we have is impacted by systemic racism, right? You can't put the onus on just one thing. And so whether it's the school board or whether it's Summit County or whether it's the city of Akron or whether it's our businesses or nonprofits, we are all sort of thinking about how to work through these issues and really try to make some real substantive concrete change, right? Not something that's gonna get us through the next month when folks are out protesting, but really look inwards and say, this is a moment for us to, we have an obligation and an opportunity to really do something here. At the city level, some of the things we've done are, you know, like many of the organizations, we've passed a resolution declaring racism to be a public health crisis, recognizing the racial disparities that come from, you know, acts of racism like redlining, like systematic exclusion. And as part of that, the city government has urged Mayor Horgan, and Mayor Horgan is in the process of working with Summit County Public Health to put forward a task force that's going to look at systemic racism and creating a five-year equity plan. And that's again, across all issues, not just, not just policing. With that being said, obviously there are improvements that we can make with regard to policing. And so the, sort of, that's the front burner thing. City Council passed a resolution banning chokeholds and neck holds and those kinds of things. And, you know, declaring that there's a duty for officers to intervene when they see unlawful force going on, like the case of Mr. Floyd. But really, the question now is how we create a really concrete dialogue, community dialogue, that brings in all kinds of voices, right? That brings in the voices of people who have had negative interactions with police and who need to share those concerns. And we're seeing that in the protests, but now we're figuring out how to have a really broad community dialogue that involves all of our elected officials, like myself, really learning. There's so much to learn, these issues, you know? I thought I was reasonably well-read on some of these subjects and I'm really trying to dig in and dig in and dig in these last few weeks. And you realize how much you don't know. And then I think all of us are trying to share information and learning. But we really want it to be something where we're going to come out of this process with some concrete things that we can move forward with. And so I think that's what we're gonna discuss a little bit later with Mokai and certainly with, with everyone who has a chance to speak. And certainly that's something I want to hear everyone's perspective on. In, in sort of, as we emerge from coronavirus, you know, things really are opening back up. The justice shift gears for a minute, you know, we really, there's a lot of folks who kind of are acting like this is over, right? And I think we know that it's not over. I think just today, Governor DeWine announced that there was a, I think it was like a chicken processing facility where there was a huge outbreak and there were a lot of new cases, I think 100 or 200 new cases just out of that. So I think it's important that we all continue to take precautions as we're, as we're going about our daily lives, not taking undue risks, not gathering in huge things unless it's, it's, it's necessary and not, and wearing masks and those kinds of things. The, the city has some updates in terms of COVID-19. The testing is, Summit County Public Health is working to establish testing centers all over Akron with some of our nonprofit groups. In the short term, there is testing at the CBS on West Market Street at the corner of West Market and Frank there. The bulk trash pickup, the city suspended to avoid exposing city workers. That has been restarted and you can call 311 to get that done. The Akron Summit County Public Library is in the midst of reopening. So those are a couple of different things. There are virtual activities that you, you, some of you may have seen in the newsletter that the city of Akron Parks and Rec Department has put together. So I just wanted to share a couple of those. But at this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Officer Aaron Brown and he can just speak a little bit about, you know, anything he wants to mention about the neighborhood and take, take any questions about any issues folks have.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for having me, Shamus. I appreciate it. Just a few things. One, going back to officers' interactions with people. If anybody has a complaint, I want everybody to know, don't hesitate to call down to the police department. They'll send a supervisor out to investigate that complaint. We all wear body cameras, so those should be rolling. If they're not, that's another issue in and of itself. But they will investigate to make sure there's no wrongdoing, much like we ask you guys to be our eyes and ears out here if you see something wrong going on. Same thing goes with us. If there's any type of alleged misconduct, that needs to be addressed. So don't, don't hesitate to call. I believe you can remain anonymous when filing a complaint. You can do it via telephone, in person, and I believe online. So just so everybody's aware of that. Unrelated to that, reference to Nikia Crawford homicide, still looking for the Black Marrow with tinted windows. One has not been located yet. So if anybody knows anything or hears anything, please don't hesitate to call our detective bureau. I know they've been getting numerous calls and they are following all those, all of those leads up as they get them. And also, I wanted to pass along on July 11th, there's gonna be a vehicle safety inspection at the Rubber City Radio Group from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. We've done this the last few years, usually in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office and Ohio Highway Patrol. You can bring your car in, we'll inspect it, lights, turn signals, windshield wipers, make sure all the brake lights, everything are working. And in the past, they usually had gift cards or things to make those repairs right there on scene. Not, no tickets are gonna be issued. It's just a, a public safety thing to make sure the cars are all operating properly. So that will be again, July 11th from 10 till 2 at the Rubber City Radio Station on West Market. And that's all I have, Shamus. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Brown. I really appreciate that. And, you know, I think to the point about Nikia Crawford, I think I neglected, you know, this is a tragic killing that happened over the weekend and there was another, also a killing of a black man downtown Akron. And there's a lot of uncertainty in the community about, you know, what's going on. And, you know, EPD is working to sort of chase down leads, but certainly I think anyone who sees something, please reach out. There's a reward that was announced today for, from the family and also from some other groups for any information. And all this kind of, you know, it's, it's just a terrible thing. And I, I went on, after she passed away, I went on her social media and was just looking back through. You know, she had just posted about graduation and just posted about the things. And it's, it's really just an incredibly tragic thing. And I think it, you know, it also kind of, it obviously speaks to the moment that we're in and concerns about public safety and concerns about all of these things. And so I think that, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, these, these issues always hit close to every issue that's going on at the national level. It always hits home in some, in local respect in different ways. At this time, unless there are any questions for Officer Brown, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Dr. NJ Akbar to, okay, let me, Bill, let me unmute you here. Are you able to unmute yourself, Bill?
Okay. Come here. You know, in spite of everything we hear nationally, I think we need to recognize that we have a, just a, a very, very professional police department in this, in this city. Both my wife Jenny and I have been on a ride-along. I don't know if everybody knows about ride-along, but it's an opportunity for any citizen to ride along with, with a patrol car. And the best time to go is Friday, the midnight shift. It starts at midnight. And it is amazing what these, our, our police officers have to put up with, the verbal abuse, the, the, you know, in, in provocation. And they're just, they're just very, very well-trained to diffuse the situation. And so if anybody has, has any complaint about the police, I suggest they first go on a ride-along. And I think there are too many good police officers that are being hurt by this few bad guys that are out there that have committed these crimes. So I just wanted to speak a word about what a great, in my opinion, the police department that we have here in Akron.
Thanks, Bill. And I, you know, I certainly, I know where you're coming from, but I guess what I would say, and, and, you know, I think it goes without saying that we, we all know, I think, a lot of esteemed people in our police department who've devoted their lives to public safety and who, who work a difficult job and are decent people, like, like everyone on this call, doing their best. And one of them is right here with us. And we all know these folks. But at the same time, I do think that, you know, it's, people have legitimate concerns. We've seen legitimate concerns. Obviously, we've seen, we've seen horrific cases of unlawful force in other places. And I think it's also, it would be foolhardy to say that Akron is immune from these issues and that, you know, that we have some kind of special sauce, right? And if trust is builds up, so too trust is fluid and trust can erode over time. And trust must constantly be reaffirmed. So, so we can appreciate the great aspects of our Akron Police Department while saying that there are improvements we can make to accountability and oversight. There are improvements we can make to use of force policies. And I think those two things can coexist. At the same time, these are difficult issues. And I think, you know, we're, we're gonna have an open and candid conversation about. So at this time, I am gonna turn it over to Dr. Akbar to talk about the schools and, and give us an update there.
Okay. See, I'm muted now. Thank you, Shamus. I think I also wanna share my, my deepest thoughts and sympathies with the Crawford family as we know that there has been a $50,000 reward placed to find out who was driving that car. But more importantly, I think we should also know that this was one of our bright spots in this city. And she was sent off to go to Central State in the fall. And who knows what type of contribution she would have made to this community or any other community that she would have been a part of. And so we just want to send our deepest condolences to our family and recognize what a loss it really is. And so with that being said, I think everyone else talked about that already. But in Akron Public Schools, we are still doing meals between 9:30 and 11:30 at the same schools we were doing it before, plus the Reach Opportunity Center in Summit Lake area. And we've also added the Wise Boys and Girls Club, which is on 889 Jonathan. And that, they'd serve between 12 and 1. So we are still doing meals throughout the summer for families and children who, who need it. So they do not need to be APS students to take a part of that. So you definitely want to send any of the, anybody you know who has children who may need some extra meal to, to those sites. We also are proud to have recently announced the Teacher of the Year, Margaret Oliver, who is at Helen Arnold as a special education teacher. We're really excited to celebrate her and just the amazing work she has done with her students as the intervention specialist at Helen Arnold. And most of you know Helen Arnold is not necessarily in our ward, but it is one of the schools in which we really are focused on trying to increase literacy and reading in that, in that community. Because that is a challenge that we know we have in that community. A lot of it stems from early childhood education not being so readily available. But just knowing that she, we have teachers like Ms. Oliver doing yeoman's work with our students in that school is something to be applauded. Next, I will just talk about our last meeting where we, we two passed a resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis. We wanted to make sure that we, we didn't just put lofty words on paper. And so we, we did have nine actions that we are going to take immediately to begin working on to, to try to eradicate racism as much as we possibly can within the, the school system. And we know it is prevalent in education as well as every other system we have in this country. And so we're, one of the things we're, we're looking to do is to do a better job of honoring our indigenous people. We know that we live on sacred land and grounds and we want to be able to honor and recognize their contributions to our society, not only here in this local area, but also nationally. Also, we are developing a racial equity policy. This racial equity policy will extend our current equity policy, which basically states that we will focus on the success of all students and give students what they need. This racial equity policy will specifically explicit and explicitly talk about the challenges we have around racism and racial equity so that we can better promote racial equity in our school buildings and our hiring and other areas. We also are going to create more policies that, that allow us to be, to have more culturally relevant teaching and lessons in our classrooms. And so we're looking at ways to re, to shift what we teach and to ensure that our students that we have in our district are seeing themselves in the curriculum in which we teach. We also are monitoring racial bias instances. We, we hear a lot that I might have made a complaint or reported that this happened, but nothing ever, no one ever told me what happened with it. And so we're gonna do a better job of monitoring and tracking that and then also reporting more globally what instances we received and what some general outcomes have been. As, as well as extending our implicit bias training, which we have had, but we're, we're going to extend that instead of it being, if that principal wants it, they'll have it, we're, we're gonna look at extending it so that many of our staff have that opportunity to receive that training. The other three are reviewing our standards with the Akron Police Department. Currently, we have community resource officers who come from the Akron Police Department and they provide outstanding service to our students and, and our schools. They do not do any discipline. And we also, we, we do our very best not to have any arrests or use of force in our schools either. So those are things that we have focused on in the past, but we want to continue to focus on that even more. And so we thought it was important for us to just review with everything going on in society, those, those expectations with our police department. We also, last few things, we also are publishing rights and responsibilities for our students when engaging with the police and our community resource officers. A lot of times, our students don't know what their rights are. We also want to make sure that our police officers are not necessarily questioning our students with, in a room by themselves and that they have an administrator or a parent or someone there with them. And so that they, they know what their rights are. And we want to do a better job of publishing, publicizing that. We are also reviewing our hiring practices and promotion trends so that we do a better job of hiring and promoting staff that look like the makeup of the district. So doing a better job of that. And lastly, we are forming employee resource groups, which are based off identity in other areas where the employees can get together to develop. The best way I can explain it is, is like an advocacy group. It's not a part of the union necessarily, but it's district-based, where they get to do programming amongst themselves, build camaraderie relationships and strengthen their craft as well, based off different identities so that everyone feels supported. And the hope is we build a stronger morale between our staff as well by having those employee resource groups. And with that, that is the quick and dirty update from Akron Public Schools.
Does anyone have questions for Dr. Akbar?
Scott?
When do you think will be the, as a parent with, I graduated one now with three kids in the school system, what will be the go point? When are we gonna get that little slip? Because we got the report cards today that we're still reviewing. And I know that you guys, you guys applied to do the online versus in-person together, whatever. When do you anticipate we're gonna get that little slip that says it's go time and this is what we need to prepare for?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I got a phone call and it disrupted it.
We heard it ringing.
I'm so sorry.
It's fine. Just graduated one, but I still got three in the system, okay? So the question is, you know, we saw that, I saw Lisa Mansfield posted that Akron was among the people that had, among the groups that had requested to do the mixed online and, and in-person. So when do you anticipate we're gonna get that little slip that says it's go time and this is what we're gonna do in the fall?
So I, the first thing I wanna say is I think we wanna be cautious about having a specific timeframe we give to any of this because... So sorry, I don't know why.
That's great. Somebody, hey, somebody wants to talk to you.
Okay, there you go. Okay, I thought you need some, okay. So we wanna be cautious about giving a designated time when we go with a final decision because none of us control the coronavirus or the curve. And so we also don't control what the state will ultimately mandate us. And so right now, they've asked us to pre, to submit to them what our ideal situation would be with everything we know right now. And so we did submit that we want to have both options of having remote learning or continuing that remote learning as well as having some face-to-face learning, which will be following their socially, or I'm sorry, their chance to physically distance guidelines. And so we will be following those and looking to do that. I, I'm not, I, I can't give you a date because as soon as I give you one, that date will probably no longer be relevant. So I know that's probably not the answer you wanted, but...
Just give us two weeks notice. We need, we need, we need two weeks. Because you know, we gotta set up, as parents, right? We gotta figure out, work from home, do we?
Right, right. I definitely, I definitely hear what you're saying. And the one trouble thing that we have, and hopefully that we've been in it a little bit longer, is the state can come out and mandate us to do something totally different than what we planned at the last minute and we have to follow those guidelines. So that's the one thing that I'll, I'll say is even if we give you the go order, this is how it's gonna be at any time after that, depending upon what happens in society and in, in state. That could change and we would have to go to a whole different, whole different direction. And so we wanna apologize that that is the case now and ask everyone for grace and flexibility as we will do the best we can to communicate what we know when we know it.
No, it's great. It's, it's all, you know, there's so many difficult, moving pieces of this. One thing I just wanted, if you can just talk about briefly, you're holding on us a little bit. For the last week or so, you've been hosting this Perspectives with Black Men. Can you tell us a little bit about this, Dr. Akbar? Oh man, you're still, you're still muted. There you go.
Hey, there you go. Thanks. He, he's trying to keep me silent, I see. I'm just messing with you. So, so Perspectives with Black Men, we've been doing for the last two and a half weeks now. It's on Facebook. If you go to @perspectivesblackmen, you can find it. We're basically, one of the things that I do in my research is, is expanding the narratives of black men in our country. And so we're producing interviews and conversations with black men across this country on their views on different topics. So we have had, the last one was mental health experts who are black men talking about the importance of mental health in the black community, but specifically for black men. We've also had, I can't even think of all of them. We, we've had under 25, so getting some perspectives of those individuals that we see right now protesting and talking about the changes that we need. We have tonight at 8:30, we have wisdom from our elders and fathers, fatherhood, and we have educators and legal aspects and different other sessions coming up. But it's just a way to, to have people give it, get a understanding of what the experiences of black men are so that we don't always think of us as thugs and as individuals without education.
No, and, and, you know, it's, it's such an important thing and I really appreciate that. I, I, it's almost every day that you're doing them and I was like, where does he find the time? But, you know, you, you...
Wednesdays and Sundays.
There you go. Thank you so much. I think now we're going to turn it over to my friend, Imokai Okolo. Imokai is a Firestone High School graduate. And as of, I think, two weeks ago, I think, is that right? Is a graduate of the University of Akron School of Law, where he has done an amazing job in mock trial competitions, winning some, some national competitions here. And he has agreed to take a break from bar studying to give us some of his thoughts about, you know, the recent issues that we're discussing about policing and about systemic racism and about protests. And, you know, has been working on some of these issues locally. And so I thought would be, you know, able to give us a great perspective. So I'm gonna turn it over to him. So I'm going to turn it over to him and then we're going to have a conversation.
Thank you so much, uh, Shams. I really appreciate it. I hope everyone's doing well, being safe and staying healthy. Um, like Shana said, my name's Imokai Okola. I'm from here in Akron. I went to Essex Elementary School, Litchfield Middle School, Firestone High School. Um, I graduated, went on to Miami University in Oxford, Ohio and got a bachelor's degree in social justice studies. Go Miami alum, love and honor. And then I, uh, I came back home and went to the University of Akron School of Law and now have my law degree. And then, uh, studying to take the bar exam. So that is not fun, but, uh, it's, uh, it's going to be worth it in the end. Um, so, uh, I'm also in addition to me being a student, right? I'm a community organizer at heart. Uh, over the past couple of years, I've kind of taken that social justice studies degree and really been trying to do this kind of community work and, uh, and learn. And really trying to see and find my place and how we can bring about change in our communities. Um, I do my community organizing work out of the womb, which is the way of mind and body in Akron, Ohio, uh, located on East Mortgage Street, across the street from Dave's. Uh, so if you're ever interested in community organizing work, come on down and see us. Uh, we happy to talk with you and happy to talk with you about, uh, issues and see how you can get involved. Um, before I kind of talk about, you know, what activists across the country here locally are pushing for. I kind of want to give us a background to kind of, you know, uh, inundate us and put us on, on the same kind of footing when we talk about these issues, right? Um, and so policing, right? This idea of policing started a long time ago. Um, and to be honest, the reality of policing, it started with slavery, right? It started with police officers necessarily being slave catchers. And yes, it's moved far away from that, right? But the idea is that policing started, um, from the idea of like catching slaves and, and bringing them back or doing whatever, right? Um, over the years, that's evolved, right? And so we saw that in the nineteen hundreds that, uh, policing started to turn into something different, right? They started doing things like community policing, police officers started walking beats, right? They started walking through neighborhoods, getting to know people. Um, they did that with like batons and a gun, right? You know, that was like standard policing. Um, that was the root of it all, right? And in the sixties, the fifties, the seventies, eighties, nineties, we saw a huge increase in the amount of funding that we gave to police officers, right? And that we gave to police departments. And at that same time, as the police budget continued to rise and rise and rise in this country, we actually started to take money away from education, from healthcare, from poverty issues, from dealing with housing issues, right? A lot of our social services took a hit in finances while police funding, uh, was going up. And you know, those social services, a lot of those tasks shifted over to policing, right? A lot of police officers started taking on various tasks to deal with social services. Um, and I'll talk about a little bit about that later. Um, but we also saw that at that same time, right? As police officer spending started to go up, we started to see somewhat of reduction in crime in the United States. A lot of folks, um, you know, experts say that they've done studies and they survey folks across the country and people believe that crime is going up. They feel as though crime might be going up in their communities, but in reality, all those statistics tell us is that over the years, crime has actually been going down. Um, and you may be thinking, uh, police spending is going up, but crime is going down. Doesn't that mean that's a result of police work? Um, but you know, experts want us to take pause there, right? They want us to really kind of look about what society has done and how society has developed. So when we look at how safety has been in our country, there's been a shift in how we kind of operate between one another, right? So over the course of the years, in the seventies, the eighties, the nineties, we saw a huge advancement and advanced safety systems, right? Now, back then we didn't have home alarm systems, right? But now we do, right? That's a new safety measure that we've enacted. Um, social and, uh, private security has gone up in this country immensely, right? Whether it be private security for businesses, private security in neighborhoods, uh, what have you, but that has seen a significant increase as well. Neighborhood watch programs, right? You know, we know the communities are best equipped to have neighborhood watch programs. Here in Ward Eight, we have various neighborhood watch programs and the communities are looking out for one another, right? Keeping an eye on their neighbors, keeping an eye on their communities. Um, and public programs have started to change as well. And the makeup of financial, I guess, the makeup of social service, uh, services have begun to change. And that has led to us being and living in safer communities, right? Um, now, at the same time policing has gone up, the militarization of policing has also gone up. And what I mean by militarization is that I mean that police officers started being equipped with different tools, right? We see that police officers now have, you know, tear gas, they have shotguns, they have police dogs that they use. They have a plethora of various tools to be able to do their police work, right? Um, and obviously that's cost us money, but what we have seen is that over the years, we have the, the police brutality in this country has been publicized, right? We've seen on the news all the time, every month we see something else has happened to another black life here in this country. And it has been shocking the conscience of us in this country and it has really begun to have us reimagine what safety looks like, right? We're seeing that there is a conflict, there is a battle between, you know, black communities necessarily, police, policing in America. And we're trying to figure out what to do with that conflict, right? And it's not even just black communities, right? It's communities in general, right? Black communities are not specifically the ones that are being, um, necessarily brutalized by police, but all communities are having these issues. Um, and so when we think about what safety is, we have to have a more robust conversation, reimagine what that looks like, right? Police officers have been the number one tool in the United States for us to promote safety. But in reality, we have to take a step back and think about what is safety, right? Um, you know, we saw the tragic events that happened to Nikia Crawford here in Akron, um, and that is such a tragedy, right? You know, um, such a bright and talented young girl has lost her life and her future has kind of gone away, right? Um, and when we think about that situation, no, the police aren't at fault for that situation, right? There, there's nothing that the police could have done for that situation. There's nothing that the police did wrong in that situation. And now the police are actively going out and looking for them and they're doing a pretty good job of doing what they need to do to, to, to figure out what happened to Nikia. But at the same time, what safety looks like is that situation not happening at all, right? Is Nikia not being shot at that stoplight and her being able to go about her day, go to college, go to Central State University, become that doctor, lawyer, whatever she did, or whatever she wanted to do, right? And so when we think about safety, we have to think about what are, what essentially makes communities unsafe. And we know that crime makes communities unsafe, right? And we have to think about what's the root of crime, right? The root of crime, a lot of times, and experts will tell you that it's poverty, right? That it's mental health issues, that it's lack of cert, it's, it's circumstances, right? And if we can attack those roots, those problems, right? We can, can make our community safer. And when we think about what police do, we understand that most of the time, police officers are responding after the fact, right? Someone has been harmed, crime has happened and the police officers are coming after the fact to hold individuals accountable, right? Accountability looks a lot different than safety. And what activists across the country are urging that we do is that we rethink what safety looks like, right? We don't want these situations to happen from the get-go. We understand that crime is, you know, inevitably going to be there, right? That's somewhat of human nature, but there's a way for us to reduce crime and reduce that, that harm that happens in our communities. Um, and so that kind of has led us to think about policing, right? And think about what it is that we're you, that we're doing in this country to create safety. And for the past decade after decade after decade, we've thought that in order to make our community safe, we're just going to fund and fund and fund policing. But we haven't seen a return on that investment, right? Communities aren't necessarily safer. This crime is still happening. It's not going down more and more and more. And so what can we do to make communities safer? And what activists are urging that we do is that we start to attack the root causes of these situations. And that's where de-funding the police, that lingo has come about, right? And what defunding is all about is about reallocating resources to areas in our government and areas in our communities that we know are going to be able to promote safety, that we know are going to help reduce poverty, that we know are going to help reduce the education inequalities that we know are going to help reduce the healthcare inequalities, right? Um, defunding the police is not about getting rid of the police, right? It's not saying that we're not going to have police anymore. It's saying that we need to figure out how we allocate resources to best promote safety. Um, and you know, the city of Akron, like specifically, we've had some problems with our budget in the sense of, you know, there's not a lot of money coming into the city and we have to figure out how to make do with the resources that we have. And what we're saying is that maybe we can take some of that money that we typically give to police officers and put some of that money into various safety programs, right? If we look at our city budget and thirty-three percent of our city budget, thirty-three percent is dedicated to the police department, right? That's about fifty-six million dollars. At the same time, you know, public health, they have seven percent in the budget, right? There's, there's significant disparities when we look at that budget. And what activists across the country are urging that we do is rethink safety, rethink what's going to make us safe, attack those root causes. And we need to throw some money at it, right? Where are we going to get that money from? We're going to get that money from the police departments. And so that's what it's all about. Um, and I think it's a recognition that police officers aren't superheroes. This is not, uh, a gang up on the police officers, the police officers have been doing wrong after wrong after wrong. It's a recognition that some of the things police officers respond to, they just don't need to respond to, right? Um, take for instance, a, a traffic incident, right? Two cars get into a car accident. A police officer with a gun doesn't need to come and handle that situation, right? We need someone with the city, someone with some sort of authority to come out, cite who's wrong, collect the proper paperwork. And make sure that everyone is going to be happy with the result and hold folks accountable for that situation. And so what we want to do and what we urge is that community conversations happen so that we can truly rethink safety and rethink what it is that we're tasking our police officers with, because we're asking our police officers currently to be superheroes. We're asking them to go out and tackle issue after issue after issue, most of which are not adequately trained for, for certain situations, right? And so what we're saying is that we want to better use our resources, want to put the professionals on the front line. And the way we do that is this colloquial term, defunding the police. Um, and so I know Shams has some questions. We can kind of go back and forth and kind of talk about some of these issues.
Yeah. Thank you, Imokai. And, uh, obviously we can see why you won all those competitions. With, uh, some of your speaking skills and, you know, I think that, um, you know, you, you set it up, you know, well, but, uh, when we're looking at some of these things, I think, um, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not blaming the rhetoric. But it's, it's, it's interesting how, we were talking about this, you go back and look at some of the previous conversations. And it's, it's more familiar, I think, than, than we'd realized. The Beacon Journal has been doing a lot of great reporting on, you know, some of the past conversations about a police civilian review board or about community policing and the history of that in Akron or about, you know, different things like that. And it's been kind of eye-opening. Um, I talked about this in the newsletter, so folks may have seen it, but in case you didn't, I want to remind you. Um, the, uh, Beacon Journal had this, uh, twenty-eleven police executive research forum study that the city commission, uh, is done by, you know, an independent respected agency. And which, to be fair, generally praised the Akron Police Department. Um, but they had thirty-three recommendations and some of them are familiar things that we've talked about, right? They're, you know, uh, re-establishing community oriented policing as the guiding philosophy for the police department. Uh, improving the auditor's office, uh, creating a civilian review board, a civilian advisory board. But the second to last thing was the thing that caught my eye because the Akron Police Department should aggressively pursue, aggressively pursue alternative methods of responding to that, to the public services demands other than the immediate dispatch of a patrol unit, you know? And there's not a ton of daylight between the stuff that you're hearing from protesters and that statement, you know? And I think it is a fundamental reflection of something I think we can all acknowledge. There are, I think, if I'm right, about a quarter of a million calls for service on the Akron Police Department every year. And a lot of those are for all kinds of different things. And, uh, if we can take some of those and say, hey, can a, can a counselor respond to, you know, a non-violent situation with a homeless individual or, or things like that? And, and try to figure out how to be more efficient and more effective. And in some ways, you know, that's what we've been doing with different programs, uh, uh, like the, um, quick response teams, which have responded to overdose, people who have overdosed. And to avoid future overdose calls, go out with an officer and with a public health worker and try to respond to those and, and get people to treatment. And so there are little pilots here and there, um, but I think this is something that, you know, is, 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 is something that is not as controversial actually as it seems and it really, like Imokai said, invites us to reimagine what safe places look like. You know, for many years, Marilyn Keith sort of focused so much on block watches. Cause you recognize that communities, uh, uh, can help be then eyes and ears and can hold people accountable just as police officers hold people accountable as well. Um, and, and Imokai, I'm mostly just talking at this point, but, uh, the other point I wanted to riff off of that you said was that, you know, we talk about these upstream issues like education and transportation or housing or poverty. Uh, but, you know, they're often actually at different levels of government, you know? And so when you say that, you know, police are getting a significant, uh, uh, a portion of the city operating budget, which is true because of wages, uh, you know, uh, it's close to, you know, about five hundred of the city's eighteen hundred employees. That's, that's something that's going to happen with, with numbers, but the, uh, uh, but public health is also funded at the county level, right? Education, you know, the city, uh, uh, has paid in part for the CLCs. But Dr. Akbar can tell you that the state determines education funding. And we've had unconstitutional and inequitable funding at the state level, according to the Ohio Supreme Court since nineteen ninety-seven, right? And so, you know, a lot of times it's, it's more complicated than, and I'm not, you know, it, it's something where the, the different levels of government interaction, we couldn't take all the money from the Akron Police Department if anyone wanted to. And I know they don't, but if, if anyone wanted to take all the money and tomorrow put it in some accounting public health, that's not going to fix the upstream issues, right? They have to be fixed at the county level and at the state level and at the national level too. Uh, so I, I don't know if you have, if you want to pick it back up.
I think there is some nuances to that, right? I think we have to do, we definitely have to understand that there's three different levels of government, right? We have our local level, our state level and our federal level. But I think we have to really understand the role of our local government, right? The role of Mayor Horgan, the role of our city council is to advocate for our best interests, right? At the end of the day, they're advocating for our best interest up the chain, right? So they're going to the state government, they're going to the federal government advocating that more money is rooted and more money is sent to our communities. So we can fix some of those upstream issues that you're talking about. At the same time, when Mayor Horgan or our city council realizes that the federal government and the state government is not doing their job, that they're not sending those proper resources, it's on them to figure out how they can create those resources for our community, right? How they can take the resources that we currently have, reorganize those resources and make sure that they're going to where they need to be. And it's on them to advocate for us and it's on us as voters to push them to do that, right? And not for them to, not to wait around and, and wait for it to happen, but it's on us to push them to make that happen. And so while yes, this is a problem at the state level, at the federal level, at the same time, we have to recognize our power here at the local level. And when we think about government, a lot of times the problems that we see in our communities are because that we've lacked that ability to really value local government. We value state and federal government so much more that we don't really care about these local elections, right? And that's shown in voting, right? We see that across the wards, right? You're the highest vote getter across ward council persons, right? You're the highest vote getter and you only had three thousand two hundred and some votes, right? There are easily, easily ten thousand people plus that live in Ward Eight. So that's at least eight thousand people or seventy thousand people are voting, right? Twenty thousand, right? So we have a five-digit number of folks who don't vote because they don't somehow care or they don't, they're not somehow invested. Nothing's moving them to action to vote here locally. And so that's what we as organizers are trying to do, right? We're trying to value local government and value our voice as people, right? Because when you look at that governmental organization chart, it's the voters at the top, right? The voters are the one who control everything that happens below them, right? The mayor, city council, all of them work for us. But the problems we sometimes see is that when transparency is not a thing, when the information isn't flowing up to the voters, that organizational chart flips because we can't hold people accountable if we don't have the information to hold them accountable. And so what we as voters need to do is continue to push our representatives, continue to push everyone that we put in office to do what's best for our communities.
No, I, I love that, uh, you mentioned that anecdote last night to me and I think that's so true in terms of transparency and accountability, right? It's, it, it, it should not be us passing the buck, right? The folks, those of us who knock on doors and run for city council have an obligation. And, you know, we, we need to create structures in my mind. I mean, one of the things that this all comes down to, right, is trust, right? You read the, uh, Twenty First Century Report on Policing that President Obama shared that came out of his administration. It talks about, you know, the relationship between policing and public safety and trust, right? Those two things go hand in hand and it's true for government as well. And we've had decades in which people have become alienated from government at our level, but also become alienated from government at the local level. Because government is the thing that doesn't fix the potholes and doesn't, you know, get things done. And, uh, doesn't, you know, fix these kind of systemic problems. And, uh, one of the things that I've tried to talk a lot about is how do we get the people who aren't engaged, engaged, right? And not in a condescending way, not in like a what are they doing wrong way, but in a, you know, how do we meet people where they are? People are busy and people are working a couple of jobs and people are, you know, have families. Uh, but, but, you know, there are, you know, a lot of the folks on this call are people who consciously are making an effort to get engaged. But we constantly have to figure out new ways of engaging people. And then part of this, and I'm about to set you up here on the question, is that part of this is, um, creating a really, what I meant by, you know, we really do have to create a dialogue and a concrete way of bringing the community into this conversation about policing, right? Because there is so much to learn and it is so complicated. And, um, how do you think, you know, we can go about really engaging with people in a way that, that brings in voices of people who often aren't heard on these issues?
I think we have to realize that we need to be speaking to people's self-interest, right? What moves people to action is their self-interest. And so when I'm a politician or when. And so when I'm a politician or when someone is coming to your door, it's more of an open dialogue, it's the same, like, what, what do you want changed, right? What do you want to see in your community? And when we speak to people's self-interest and we're really able to develop that perspective on self-interest, we can better craft policy and better craft information to send down to voters to get them involved and to get them engaged. I also think there's a huge political education piece that we need, right? Um, there is, our educational system isn't necessarily set up to have individuals leave high school with the best knowledge about how their local government works, right? And so I think it's an onus on us is to continue to educate our communities, to continue to have these conversations so they know how government works and we can better have knowledge to hold people accountable. Um, and I think when we work together on those things, I think we, we're definitely going to see each other moving forward. And I also think we have to develop and continue to build community, right? I love these community events, I love these ward meetings because we're the, you see the people who come to the ward meetings are the people who are invested in their communities, right? I'm sure all of you know your neighbors, you know people in your communities because you've invested time, right? And community safety and community accountability and accountability for our federal government and state government and local government looks different when we build community among one another. When we're able to know one another and we can have conversations, talk about these issues and build perspective, right? I'd love to know the perspective of Audrey, the perspective of Phil and Linda, the perspective of Jack, right? And when we build those perspectives, we're able to better have conversations and we're better able to move forward and we have community, right? And we have safety and we have just a better living situation, right?
Yeah, I know, I, I totally agree. And on that note, uh, would like to open it up to folks who have questions, who have comments. And really would love to hear anyone's voice, uh, you know, whether you agree or disagree or have, you know, thought, please just raise your hand or, you know, put it in the chat, uh, anyone who wants to, to participate.
Thank you for your thoughts, those were amazing. And, and my kids are on the same track as you, so they all go to Case, then Litchfield, then Firestone, so. Good stuff there. Um, I messaged, I put in the chat, Akron's a very angry city right now. Um, so this was to Officer Brown and to you as well. We, right now, literally as we speak, we have two active homicide situations taking place right now. Okay, I run Free Threater Go. Um, people have been keeping us posted all day, I've got all the information. But the point is, that's four homicides in four days. And, and one of the things that we're dealing with right now, and I don't know how to combat this and how we can address this as a city, is the, the thought process of the snitch culture. And that is, if you tell information to the police, you're a snitch. And, and, and we're up against that in all these communities right now. How do we as citizens take back our streets? Because right now, people are literally getting gunned down in the middle of intersections. What do we do? Because the police cannot be everywhere, as you just pointed out. And now, that's four, that's four people that have been shot in four days in Akron, okay? How do we get past this? Do we work with Crime Stoppers? Does Crime Stoppers offer rewards for every one of these situations? What do we do?
Thanks, Kat. And either, either of you want to?
Um, for me, I think we need to, one, increase the trust amongst whoever law enforcement is going to be in our communities. And I also think we have to increase what community accountability looks like. I think communities are best positioned to help keep communities safe, right? We have block watch programs, we have various programs that allow citizens to kind of be involved in what their community accountability looks like. And I think we have to also understand that crime is not some lofty kind of one-all solution. Crime is dependent on communities, right? It varies from even the west side of Akron to the south side of Akron to the east side of Akron, right? And so I think we have to have conversations and figure out how do we empower citizens to take back their communities by taking back that accountability measure. And when we invest in our citizens, right? Give them resources and give them tools to allow them to sit back, have conversations, evaluate their personal situations, evaluate their community situation, they can better provide solutions and provide accountability measures for us to make that happen. But right now, we don't necessarily have the funding to do that, right? And so where do we get the money from to do that? A lot of people disagree.
Yeah, and I think, again, it comes back to trust. It, it comes back to, uh, creating situations in which, you know, people feel comfortable and people feel safe also, right? I mean, you know, people are, uh, uh, you know, these are dangerous situations. Um, and, you know, uh, you know, you, everyone, everyone wants to be safe. And I guess if I can actually just push a little bit on something you said earlier, Amokai, which is that I certainly take your point that you have to speak to people's self-interests. But we also have to enlarge people's understanding of what their self-interest is, right? Because I think we've kind of, everyone, you know, is, kind of feels safe in their own little foxhole. You can, if you, even if you're in a tough neighborhood, you could go inside your house and you can, you know, lock the door and you can generally be pretty safe. But, uh, I think we need, you know, when people get to know each other, especially people who are different from them, they increase the level of empathy that they have for situations that, you know, are actually a lot closer than you might think, right? And our, 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 uh, all of our fates are, I think, more inextricably linked than we would think. Um, so that's sort of, uh, you know, just some final thoughts on it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Um, okay, Roger? Roger and Gwen.
Um, first, I had a conversation with a couple of young people and their response to me to the question of, what is this, we don't tell culture? And they said to me, if the police don't talk, if the police don't snitch on their gang, we don't snitch on ours. So I found that an interesting perspective. But my question is, I would like to know who to call, who do I call other than the police? Uh, because I've been reluctant to call the police. If there's a problem that I have with a neighbor or, or an associate, and yet I don't want to call somebody who, who by virtue of their job, and I understand and appreciate how tough that job is, I don't understand, but I do appreciate how tough that job is. I don't want to call someone who has to carry a gun to talk to me about a neighbor who lets a dog poop on my lawn. That doesn't, that's not, that's just an example. I would love to be able to call someone else to help me work through an issue like that. It doesn't seem to me that requires somebody who has the capacity to, to, uh, impose a lethal force if things go badly. So tha- that's my question. Is there a department, is, do I call 311 and say the dog's pooping on my lawn? Who, who are you going to talk to about this or what am I?
As the recipient of some of those calls, I think that I've thrown myself under the bus here. I think some of that is mine. Uh, but I think that is true, that, you know, it is, uh, about, you know, looking to, um, the different city departments and to, uh, you know, oftentimes, actually, I think we could expand things that are, because even I get calls that are really neighbor disputes and we, you know, I know Officer Reynolds as well. And, you know, if we had more mediation services, if we had more kind of, if we had community groups that really, I mean, that's one of the things that kind of associations can do is they really can squash, uh, uh, fights between people and neighbors. So, um, you know, I, I do think that that's something that, you know, for me and city departments to step up.
You know, I really, I really appreciate you bringing that up, Ms. Gwen, because that is the entire point right there. And I think, well, our city doesn't have an infrastructure set up for that, right? We don't have an infrastructure set up for you to be able to call someone else that's not going to bring a gun, right? And how do we do that, right? We have to develop new structures and new systems that allow us to have a depth chart of individuals to call with various, to handle various situations, right? And we see these conversations happen in government, you know, we want to add, add something new to the city and the problem is, oh, we don't have the money for that, you know? What do we, where are we going to get the money from? That's a conversation we have to have, right? We have to get money from some other place. And so if we're going to be taking back police officers' responsibilities, that means the money that we give them to currently have all responsibilities they have now needs to be redirected to a 311 program, to someone to come out and say, hey, and talk to your neighbor that doesn't have a gun. To be like, hey, can you, can you figure out what's going on with your dog? You know, can we get you some bags or something? Do we need a park, um, to kind of figure that out? And I think your other point you mentioned too, is speaks to that kind of double standard that communities feel between police officers. Um, one prime example is that, say, there's an officer involved shooting or something happened with the police officer, immediately that police officer is allowed by, via, by way of contract between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police, the FOP, the police union, they're allowed forty-eight hours to go home, kind of figure out their story, talk to their FOP rep, and then after that forty-eight hours, go back and actually talk to a prosecutor or talk to someone and report what happened. Average citizens are not afforded that opportunity, right? When something happens on the street, you have to talk immediately. They're taking you down to the station, you're not allowed to call. They're not offering you the ability to go talk to your attorney for forty-eight hours and then come back and come up with a story. And that double standard is what gets the community frustrated, right? And so how do we fix that? That's another hurdle, right?
Thank you, Amokai. Um, Officer Brown, I, you know, I just want to make sure that I, you know, give you a chance if you'd like to respond to any of the discussion dialogue. Obviously, you know, really value your perspective on these things.
Uh, going back to a few questions about the recent homicides and what normal citizens can do. I think the biggest thing when I talk to people is just when they're out in public, situational awareness and paying attention to what's going around with them or, or around them. Uh, you know, you could be at the intersection in the blink of a mo, in a second, a black car pulls up and fires shots into another car. And if you're zoned out or not paying attention, you know, you can miss so much. But if you're just paying attention to what's going around the best you can, maybe you could get a license plate or a better description of the suspect was in the car. Uh, and I'm sure just from me doing this job for so long, it's one of those things where I'm always out and about. I'm always paying attention to what's going on around me. Uh, but that's something you can do. And getting back to the block watch, just knowing your neighbors, knowing, you know, what's going on in your neighborhood's a huge thing. If you, you know, you, at least you don't have to be best friends with everybody, but you know everybody in your neighborhood, then you'll, you know what's going on. If something's going on down the streets, somebody's breaking into a house and you're like, that's, they don't live there, you know, what's going on? So it's just, just being aware and knowing your neighbors and then, you know, also talking to them. So if something should happen, you're going out of town, you can let your neighbors know, hey, I'm going to be out of town this week. Can you keep an eye on my house, maybe put my trash cans down? Just so it looks like somebody's here, grab the mail. So I think that's key. And as far as the, uh, I think 311's great. I use the housing and dog warden all the time for issues that don't, I probably shouldn't be handling. I know a lot of times, you know, if it's after hours, the dog warden may not be on or whoever's working housing's not working. So if somebody calls in, it's almost as well, the police are always there, so we'll send an officer out to deal with it. And I've learned in my own experience is just trying to deal with neighbor disputes, it would probably be a lot, handled a lot better if an officer didn't show up. Because they feel like, you know, the other neighbor gets offended and says, oh, you have to bring the, the officer into it. And I feel like it's, it's taking it to another level in some cases. And then there's just no going back and there's just like a new hatred between two neighbors and trying to deal with that, so. That's what I've noticed in, in doing this, so.
And, and thank you so much for that perspective and, and, and for being here. Uh, you know, and, and really thank you, all of you. I think, um, this is a, uh, the, really what it comes down to. We've talked a lot about trust, we've talked a lot about community, you know? And i- it's about finding ways to build community and to share. And that's obviously what we're doing, we're doing in the middle of a pandemic. We're, we're, and everyone is, is, I think, there's a lot of us trying to do the best we can. And, and no one's perfect. I've, you know, I've made mistakes in the past weeks and months, but we're, there's some grace that we can give each other. But I really do think, especially coming out of this situation and how, how difficult it's been to watch some of the things we've watched on our TV screens the last couple of weeks and just the news that we've seen the last, last six months. Kind of thinking about new ways that we can kind of recommit to that. And maybe that's being an I-Care United Way mentor, uh, for a student one hour a week in an Akron public school, right? Maybe that's, uh, helping out with, uh, some kind of community action or organizing around whatever issue is most, most interesting to you. But I want to thank you, Amokai, for, for being part of this. I want to thank everyone who, who's, who's part of this call. And, um, I think we did have a question. Linda, we'll, we'll, I'll just reach out to you about that offline because I think it's a little bit further stuff. But thank you, everyone, for being here. Uh, we're a little bit over time, so I'm going to let everyone go. But I really do appreciate this, I appreciate this conversation and look forward to more. So take care.